Hey, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Person?
Here.
I'm sorry. Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Brier? Mr. Prince? Roll call, Mr. Mayor, three absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
I move that the absent council members be excused.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Corbin, second by Ms. Palmer, that council excuse the missing council members, absent council members, were they missing in action or?
They are.
Have a favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, first item on the agenda is a special presentation, Chief Milosevic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Law, council president Person, and the mayor's of the city council and our viewing audience, thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to recognize several members of the police department for what they've done over this last year. We have an internal process for recognizing employees. It starts at the peer level, it's not a top-down process where members will select and promote from within their own organizations employees to the quarter, moves up to a committee where that committee chooses the employee of the quarter, and then of the four, they choose the employee of the year. And after that presentation, it'll follow a special recognition for Sergeant Dan Figaro. So with that, I'd ask that Sergeant Craig Johnson step forward. Sergeant Johnson was selected as employee of the quarter for the first quarter 2013. This occurred prior to his promotion. In addition to his duties as training coordinator and quartermaster, Craig also served as a firearms instructor and team leader for the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit. Craig was selected for employee of the quarter because while he technically has the same responsibilities as any other firearms instructor, Craig consistently takes on a disproportionate share of the work. On range days, he has all the equipment, ammunition, and targets either in the van or ready to go by the time other instructors arrive for work. This is no small task, as it does take on its own initiative without discretion. Also, Craig always stays late to make sure all the equipment is secured. He is well-known throughout the firearms unit for his particular use of the order which the equipment is loaded into the van to ensure that it is safely transported. I think that's an inside joke for the people around here. When Craig develops a sage of fire, our circuit training, he routinely puts a great deal of thought and effort into the development and the construction. Our department's firearm training program has made significant progress over the years in part to Craig's efforts to detail and creativity. Please join me in congratulating Craig Johnson.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations, Craig.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Kevin, any family members or Mark Coleman or anyone who wants to stand up here and take pictures, you're absolutely welcome to do that, okay?
I'd now ask that Officer Leanne Whitney come forward. Officer Whitney was selected as employee of the quarter for the third quarter of 2013. This past year, Leanne took the department lead in coordinating a fundraiser for Special Olympics of Washington. This event was called Run From The Cops. She spent countless hours of her own time in meetings with Special Olympics staff and representatives of the landing where the event was held. She dedicated her own time without complaints or mention of compensation for her time. Leanne's dedication to this worthy cause has given her a reputation in the Special Olympics community as someone who is dedicated to the organization and is very dependable. In addition to the Run From The Cops event, in the past, Leanne has also coordinated various tipicop fundraisers at local restaurants. As a result of Leanne's efforts this past year, over $15,000 was raised in Renton for Special Olympics. Please join me in congratulating Leanne.
That's great, Leanne, thank you.
Officer Charles Hosner was selected as employee of the quarter for the fourth quarter 2013. Officer Hosner, if you could come forward. Officer Hosner was nominated for this award based on his teamwork. Throughout 2013, Officer Hosner has been a very active call-responsive officer. He works the downtown area, very busy district. In addition to handling the calls in this district, he consistently answers up for holding calls in other districts. His proactive response in handling holding calls in other districts has been noticed and appreciated by fellow officers. Officer Hosner has also been very helpful in taking multiple traffic accidents throughout the year regardless of where they occur. Like I said, this award is basically for his teamwork for this past year. So please join me in congratulating Officer Charles Hosner. By the way, there will be a group photo after we're all done here, so no runaway. I'd ask that Officer Sean Tierney come forward. Officer Sean Tierney was selected as employee of the second quarter and was selected by the committee as employee of the year for 2013. Sean is very knowledgeable in all aspects of his job. He makes sound decisions and is not afraid to assume a lead position on an investigation. Sean's work ethic was an inspiration to his fellow officers. While at the same time, he has a strong sense of compassion for those in our community who are less fortunate, including our homeless population. He has gone above and beyond what we consider the call of duty numerous times while helping victims of crimes. In May of this last year, he was given a letter of commendation for the following actions. On May 5th, 2013, Officer Tierney responded to a strong-arm robbery call which turned out to be a theft of a purse from the shopping cart at Fred Meyer's. The victim was an elderly lady who was very upset after the incident. Instead of just taking the report and moving on with his day, Officer Tierney personally contacted the financial institutions that the victim did business with and advised them of a theft of her credit cards. Once Officer Tierney realized that the victim's keys had also been stolen, he was concerned to the victim at her husband's age that they could then become further victims of a burglary or possibly a home invasion since the suspects had their keys and address. Officer Tierney again went beyond the call of duty and followed the victim to her house where he removed their locks, took them to the hardware store to be rekeyed, and then reinstall the locks. This is only one example of several that I'm aware of. I am sure there are numerous instances where Sean has gone above and beyond his duties to assist others that has never come to light. Sean is always willing to fill in or work over when needed and is known throughout the department as someone who can be counted on. Congratulations, Sean. This final presentation this evening is for Sergeant Dan Figaro. Sergeant Figaro is being awarded the department's Meritorious Service Medal for his actions on November 12th, 2013. While on route to work on November 12th, 2013, approximately 7:20 in the morning, Sergeant Figaro came to find a serious injury accident near Kent Ridge High School. He quickly notified Valcom and approached the cars. He discovered that one vehicle is badly damaged and there's a young male in the driver's area who was critically injured and unresponsive. Sergeant Figaro was unable to pull the victim from the front of the car due to the extensive damage, but he was able to extract the victim through a rear door after checking for vital signs. Sergeant Figaro notified Valcom, but he was starting CPR. Sergeant Figaro continued his life-saving efforts until he was relieved by the Kent Fire Department personnel. Only after being relieved by fire department personnel and checking the registration of the vehicle that he did realize that the car belonged to a family friend and that he knew the young man that he was providing CPR to. Once this was discovered, Sergeant Figaro drove to the family's house, told them what had happened, he drove them to Harborview Hospital to be with the victim, and he stayed with the family for several hours, providing support and comfort. Despite his crucial life-saving efforts, the victim died several hours later. This is the actions on November 12th that gave the young victim a chance of surviving a terrible collision. In responding, he balanced both his professional and personal roles to provide exemplary service while remaining calm, professional, and humble throughout. Sergeant Figaro, your willingness to selflessly render aid in this incident demonstrates high levels of professionalism and courage that reflect well on the members of the written police department. So as for this reason, you're being awarded the department's Meritorious Service Medal. Congratulations. That is tonight's formal presentation. You'd all gather up to the front for a photograph?
Family members, you're also welcome. Come on, stand by us. All right, I'm asking for you in a little bit for the wedding shot. Yeah, pull the shoulders, there you go. Great, I'll take several, and I'll get out of the way for the families. One big smile, ready, everybody? Good? Okay, and the family members, come on up. Get that nice shot. Hold those poses. I'll also provide mine. The world of social media, you guys are already on Twitter. Already been retweeted, yeah. Half a million reach.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations to everybody who was honored tonight. We really appreciate the great work you do for us. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Preeti?
Good evening, Preeti Shridhar here with the administrative report. Recently, when we had that really cold spell, the cold weather shelter located at the Harambe Church on South Third Street was opened from Tuesday, Feb. 4th through Monday, February 10th, and the shelter was open every day from nine, every evening from 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM the next day, and people were checking into the shelter at 8:30. We found this time that as the week progressed, the number of people using the shelter increased dramatically with all of 40 people who were there at the shelter on Sunday night. We want to use this opportunity to say thank you because this is a huge team effort, it's a partnership between different agencies. The shelter is staffed by volunteers from the Harambe Church. Catholic Community Services were on site every day to help people with various needs, and in fact Catholic Community Services was also able to place three people into housing situations from the shelter. And again, this is also a combination of different city departments working together during the really cold nights, the Renton Fine Emergency Services, they were out patrolling the streets, especially on the coldest night, and encouraging people to come to the shelter. So we do want to thank all the agencies involved and glad that we could keep some people warm during those cold nights. The other information I have, and I'm going to have a tough time pronouncing one of these words, from Feb. 20th till about March 31st, a contractor will be storing 52 new high-density, here's the word, polyethylene booms in the center of the aisles on the boat launch at the boat launch parking in Jean Cullen. We will set up a temporary fence around the booms and the related equipment, and the reason we're having these new booms is this is to replace 30-year-old log booms on the north side of the water walk going all the way to the northern boundary of Jean Cullen Park. The new booms will match the black polyethylene high-density booms, and it'll also help protect the south water walk and provide a better barrier and also a shorecoming device. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Preeti. Okay, moving on to audience comment, we have several people who signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer next to the city clerk, Dave Beadon.
I'm Dave Beadon, I live in Renton. My last name is B-E-A-D-O-N. My comment is kind of a question, maybe a combination of comment and question concerning an item that's on tonight's agenda about a recommendation from the city attorney to reduce the amount of time for a hearing examiner to produce a written report based on the hearing that the hearing examiner conducted. I would like someone to explain why it is necessary or advisable to reduce that period of time from 14 to 10 days, and whether or not any consideration was given to the fact that a reduced length of time might adversely impact the ability of citizens to appeal whatever happened in the hearing examiner's meeting. So I would hope that someone in the city can provide a justification for even recommending this. I, I'm clueless.
So what we'll do is we'll provide you with an answer, Mr. Beadon. This is being referred to the Planning and Development Committee, so we'll also let you know when they're going to be hearing that argument, so you can attend that also, but we'll make sure that you get your question answered.
Good, so maybe I misunderstand what's going on tonight, then. Will it tonight?
This is being referred to a committee.
Okay, thank you.
That's what's on the consent agenda, you're welcome. Next is Darius Richards.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Darius Richards. I am a resident of Kennydale since 1974, and I am coming to you tonight in two different roles, one in my capacity as an officer in the Kennydale Neighborhood Association, the other one is as a member of the community advisory group that PSE has set up to look at this issue of electrical transmission lines. Greg Zimmerman, my counterpart, has done an excellent job of running you through that, so I'm going to not repeat what he had to say, but basically, as he mentioned, there are two routes that are being considered, one of them the L Route along the lake, and that would actually be in the existing former Burlington Northern right-of-way. And the other route is the so-called M Route, which runs parallel to Monroe Avenue, and that is actually an existing white easement there, whereas what's being proposed along Lake Washington Boulevard is brand-new, a brand-new facilities. The problem with having these two routes, on the surface it looks like you have a lot of flexibility, but what it really in fact does is it pits two neighborhoods against each other, and I don't know, I'm sure that that was an intentional thing, and it might even lead, if you extended that thought out, it might even lead to the point where both routes would be utilized. Neither route will go away if the other one is upgraded. They want to keep both routes intact and improve at least one of them, and their improvement would consist of towers that could be 100, actually 225 feet tall, depending on the land topography. Now, as far as the Kennydale viewpoint, which is what I'm here tonight to represent, there's a lot of considerations involved, and some of these are unique to Kennydale. Those considerations include the effect on views, effects on wildlife, conflicts with the shoreline management program, our shoreline management plan. There are some questions as to the validity of the easement that PSE claims to have now, and you'll be hearing more about that later on, but not tonight. One of the things we could not consider, we were told that PSE, PSE told us we cannot consider, as far as our study went, the effect on property values. They claim to have a state law that says they can't favor the more affluent neighborhoods over the less affluent neighborhoods when they determine how a route's going to go. Unfortunately, those of us that live there and pay property taxes and are watching how houses depreciate in value are very concerned with that, as should the city be, who will take a hit on decreased property tax revenues if our assessed valuations go down. Another consideration about the Renton shoreline there is there's only 3.1 miles of shoreline that residents and visitors can bike, walk, and drive along. Shorelines are a very precious asset, and once they're gone, you know, they're gone forever, and that shoreline's already conflicted with really ugly utility service, and the thought of having a second row of, you know, very high poles along the rail line is just objectionable. I'm sure that the folks along the M Route, which goes along Monroe Avenue, have reasons of their own why they would like to see it go down into Kennydale, but I'm, you know, I can't speculate as to what they're going to, you know, positions they're going to take. One of the challenges that all of us as the CAG members have is to try and arrive at a solution which both routes can live with. Unfortunately, we're in the position of having an adversarial, you know, relationship, but the, we need to work together, and community values was mentioned as one way. One of the things that came up, as Greg mentioned, was the issue of going underground, and when we found out at the February 12th CAG meeting that they were going to ignore undergrounding, we were gassed, and I'm out of time. Thank you very much. You'll be hearing more from us.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Ann Simpson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's nice to be back here. I'm here basically because, as you know, I spent so much time on the SMP, and this has to do with what I consider very serious conflict between the proposed PSE line and the SMP. And I brought a part of the ordinance 5633, which went into effect in November of 2011, which states, "Fences, piers, poles, poles, wires, lights, and freestanding structures shall be designed to minimize visual prominence." Well, there is an option on the table which will minimize the visual prominence of PSE's electric transmission wires with their 90 to 125-foot poles on the Renton shoreline, and that, of course, is Route M, which follows a path already well-established through Renton for power transmission. It will not conflict with ordinance 5633, and the state mandated shoreline management program created to protect the environment and physical and visual enjoyment of the lake. So, short statement, but I'm not really sure how PSE can argue with state mandated ruling. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Thatcher?
Hi, Beth Thatcher, Renton, longtime Renton resident. I just wanted to talk about housing tonight. I got lucky, and I was able to attend the Seattle Workforce Housing Conference, and it was extremely interesting. One of the surprising things I learned was that all across the states, because there were people from several states presenting, and most of them were either council members, members of city, county, or state land trusts, there were several developers, everyone was there for the same reason, because businesses were noticing that the biggest impact to their workforce is unaffordable housing. So as the workforce is driven farther and farther away, they're having trouble recruiting. They can't find people to fill jobs. As the workforce moves away, the smaller businesses in the communities are being impacted. They also can't find people to fill jobs because these would be what would be considered, I guess, secondary labor, women like myself, you know, kids, so on. And these businesses expire. So it's kind of a lose-lose, and so Seattle was exploring all kinds of ways to overcome this, and one of them was quite interesting. It was using flexible zoning in two ways. So they already allow micro units, they allow modular units, and they're considering doing what they used to do when I lived in California when I was going to school, which is allowing you to build to the base density of the land or to the highest density of the land, but not restricting the building so that you can do infill housing of several types. Presently, the way Renton is structured, if, for instance, you live in a neighborhood that's predominantly single-family homes, maybe a smattering of fourplexes and duplexes, but say you've gotten zoned up to R100, now you're sitting on a double lot, your parents aging, you want to build a small house for them or maybe a duplex with them and want to lease the other one to support, to support them, you cannot do that. You have to build to that density requirement, and that's very restrictive. So Seattle's looking at that and saying, hey, how can we get workers closer to their jobs? How can we keep our businesses viable? How can we keep a good mix and support our existing neighborhoods? They had a lot more things, but it's going to take more than the five minutes, so that's just my first, my first shot, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I just wanted you to know that Councilman Taylor has arrived here. Hello, Madam Clerk. Okay, next is David Keyes.
Hello, I'm David Keyes, K-E-Y-E-S, citizen of Renton. I was originally going to speak on two of the issues that were on your consent agenda tonight, and I realized that both of them are being referred to committee now, which I think is appropriate, but I thought I would still touch on them. The first is the mayor's appointment subject to committee approval of Mr. Zwicker to the opening on the, excuse me, it's not the Planning and Development Committee, but it's the downtown city.
City Senator Committee.
Yes. I would hope that, one, I'm glad this is referred to committee because it seemed to be getting a little bit ahead of your reading this coming Wednesday and Thursday, when the council is going to talk in terms of discussing, possibly reviewing, agenda and initiative items for planning over the next couple of years, and it would seem to me that this position should wait until after that. I would certainly hope that you consider the appointment very carefully. There's no doubt in my mind that Mr. Zwicker is informed on the issues. He's certainly been a council member, he had one of these seats until a few weeks ago. You all are aware of what his expertises are, you're also aware of what he is like to work with, and I think there is quite a bit of dissent in the general public with the kind of very positive description that was provided by Chip Vincent in his letter recommending Mr. Zwicker's appointment. So I'd just like to ask you to consider that very carefully when the time comes. The second item, I'm also very curious as to how the modification of the city code relative to shortening the time limit for the hearing examiner to make his decision could possibly benefit Renton citizens. So I'd like to be included in that response. Go ahead.
Yes. Yes.
Is your mic on?
It's not, thank you. Garman Hughes, in the seconds of the Attorney Department. What we're actually doing is making the code conform to the state statute, and the actual section that we're making it conform to is RCW 35A's .63.170, and it is subsection three. And all we did is we essentially followed it, not, I wouldn't say word for word, but the essence is exactly the same. So, that, really, what you, what we are doing is actually making sure that people get a more prompt response after they have brought their matter before the hearing examiner.
It appears to be very benign, and I can see that thinking could be described that way, as a rationale. But I guess, again, I'm a layperson, but we were heavily involved in the appeal last summer. And in that hearing, the hearing examiner requested more information. Now, perhaps your wording's intended to still allow that, but it would appear to me that if you're limiting him to 10 days, unless the applicant, not the appellant, but the applicant in the city agree, that you're cutting out the appellant from having the opportunity to respond there. Now, if the appellant had attorneys onboard, that might be a different issue. But in many cases where your citizens are the appellant, I don't think that's true. This has, I believe, an adverse impact, and it also seems to me, again, I'm not an attorney, but it certainly seems to me that it's actually limiting the latitude that the hearing examiner currently has and is intended to have, so that he can keep the hearing process fair to both sides. And I'd like to go on record saying...
And we'll, we'll notify you of that Planning and Development Committee meeting. I'm sorry, Garman, did you have?
No, I mean, I have nothing to add to that. We're conforming to the state statute. It specifically provides for...
I'd also put up there...
Excuse me, just one second, I'm sorry. It provides specifically for the 10 working days, and we call it 10 business days, but it amounts to the same thing.
Yes, that does.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, I do have 18 more seconds. I just wanted to say that I would hope that we can keep the discussion as much as possible between the L-line and the M-line real discussions, so we're not pitting neighborhood against neighborhood. I happen to live near the M-line, but I sure don't want to see tall towers along the lake either. I go down there, I enjoy the views, and that's incredibly inappropriate, and I'm glad to see that you're disturbed about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Corbin, did you have?
Well, I was just gonna ask, is there just simple confusion between two weeks versus 10 business days? I mean, is that all we're talking about?
Yes, that's all we're talking about. It amounts to the same thing, but we wanted the language to conform more to RCW.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what it sounds like, yeah. Okay, so it's, maybe it's...
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Now, come on up to the microphone, David.
Thank you for raising that point, because essentially, what we're talking about is 14 days, is two weeks, which has two weekend days per week. So, in essence, for clarity for people at home that may not understand this, we're really not talking about eliminating constructive time that can be utilized. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman Taylor.
But unless you interpret, unless you interpret those weekends as time that could be beneficial to a resident as well, is that what you're speaking about, Mr. Keyes?
I don't, well, my understanding from reading the information here, and from my recollection, is the 14 days you currently have is 14 working days or business days, not calendar days. Now, if, if it's calendar days, and you're just clarifying that it's 10 full business days, I haven't got any problem with it at all. I'd agree, it's making it straightforward. If you actually have been interpreting it as working days or business days at 14, it is a reduction.
I see.
That's where I'm coming from.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'll let, I'll let this go to committee, but yeah, as I look at, as I look at the item, I think if it just, if currently we just give 14 days and we don't clarify that it's business days, I think the assumption would be that it's calendar days, meaning two weeks. Because a day is, I think that courts continue to say a day is a day unless you describe it as business day. So, we're trying to, we're trying to nail it down to, to working days, which actually would, would give more time if it happens to be over a holiday break or something like that. So, anyways, it'll, it'll be good to have it go to committee. I, I'd be curious to see how that sorts out, yeah, because I, frankly, I, I mean, I, I understand where the citizens are coming from. I would want to make sure the hearing examiner has adequate time also. You know, it, it seems like anything short of, of 10, of 10 working days might be a little shy, and some of these are pretty complicated. So, it sounds good.
Hey, just to clarify, when I was looking at this this morning, I was looking at the text here on the announcement that was on your agenda, and the crossed-out text in your RCW that is to be changed says, "Render a written decision within 14," and then in print these 14, "business days."
Oh, it does say that.
And then it says you're amending it to 10 business days or working days. I don't care what you call them, business or working, but it did say specifically business days.
And that is correct. I did take a look just now, and it does say that. But again, as we said, we're conforming with the RCW. So, it frankly, and, and, I mean, again, this is something that's going to committee, but the point is, in conforming with the RCW, we're actually adding language which indicates that the parties may agree to extend that period of time. So, while I imagine there could be some odd circumstance where someone could ask for the time, and another party disagrees, the reality is, is almost always, people agree to allow the hearing examiner enough time to do his or her job.
Okay, thank you, Garman. Next is Beatrice Clark.
Good afternoon to each of you. I'm Beatrice Clark. Some of you may remember me. Haven't been back for a while, I do have unfinished business, but tonight, I was compelled to come because I was watching one of the programs on the 13th of January, and you announced that you weren't having a council meeting on the 20th. And I heard it and didn't pay any attention. And then when it got to Mr. Taylor, Greg Taylor, he said, "That day is Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday." And I thought, yes, I wonder why they, when they announced it, they didn't say that, and you made that clear. And I'm sure a lot of people at home might not have really connected that had you not spoke out. Last week, I was watching the program again, and I heard Councilman Taylor give Black History tidbits. And I thought, okay, he's recognizing that February is Black History Month. I hadn't heard that mentioned at the council. And you inspired me to come and share with you tonight, so I was glad to see you come in. I said, "Well, let me go and give a little Black History in the form of poetry, a black, one of our great black poets, Maya Angelou." So, I'm gonna read a little Black History, what's Black History Month. So, I'm categorizing this as a part of Black History. And I heard Councilman Taylor say he's gonna come back tonight and load us up, so we'll see what else he has to say. So, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna share a poem by Maya Angelou, of Black History Month. Thank you. You may write me, oh, let me put my glasses on. I was gonna say, if I can see this, I'm gonna read it. For that, I can't read all this light, in this light. You may write me down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may trod me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I'll rise. Does my sassiness upset you? Why are you beset with gloom? 'Cause I walk like I've got oil wells pumping in my living room, just like moon and like suns with the certainty of tides, just like hopes springin' high, still, I'll rise. Did you want to see me broken, bowed head and lowered eyes, shoulders falling down like teardrops weakened by my soulful cries? Does my haughtiness offend you? Don't you take it awful hard, 'cause I laugh like I've got gold mines digging in my own backyard. You may shoot me with your words, you may cut me with your eyes, you may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I'll rise. Does my sexiness upset you? Does it come as a surprise that I dance like I've got diamonds at the meeting of my thighs? Out of the huts of history's shame, I rise. Up from a past that's rooted in pain, I rise. I'm a black ocean, leaping and wide, welling and swelling, I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that's warily clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise. And I have a second, if I have time?
Yes, you have, you have plenty of time.
Okay, it's called "The Caged Bird." A free bird leaps on the back of the wind and floats downstream to the current ends, and dips his wings in the orange sun rays and dares to claim the sky. But a bird that stalks down his narrow cage can seldom see through his bars of rage. His wings are clipped and his feet are tied, so he opens his throat to sing. The caged bird sings with a fearful trill of things unknown but longed for still, and his tune is heard on the distant hill, for the caged bird sings of freedom. The free bird thinks of another breeze, and the trade winds soft through the sighing trees, and the fat worms waiting on a dawn bright lawn, and he names the sky his own. But a caged bird stands in the graves of dreams, his shadow shouts and a night nears screaming. His wings are clipped and his feet are tied, so he opens his throat to sing. The caged bird sings with a fearful trill of things unknown but longed for still, and his tune is heard on the distant hill, for the caged bird sings of freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Beatrice. You selected two of my favorite poems, and thank you for bringing that to us tonight during Black History Month.
Next is Inez Peterson.
Inez Peterson, attorney-at-law in Renton. I love to say that. I do, I really do. It was quite a major accomplishment at my age to go through the rigors of law school. And so, now, as part of my follow-up to law school, which I presented last month, my first edition of the Underdog Law Report to the City Council, it wasn't showing on the screen, and most of the people who, who see the council meeting do it probably over the, the channel. So, I invite them to go to underdoglaw.info, not .com, but .info, and they'll be able to see my weekly reports to the council. This week, you know, last week I talked about adding that creative design alternatives permeating it all through the business, the building code, and how I thought that was kind of loosey-goosey, and it, it was subjective, and, and it left open to the mayor's staff, who gets a building permit and who doesn't, for what reason? Because the law doesn't provide any boundaries when it says, "And any creative alternative designs are okay too." So, now, we've got this new nuisance law coming on the horizon. I caution you, council members, putting a lien against someone's property, we, we're talking about constitutional implications here. And I hope that anyone who gets a lien from the city on their property contacts me, 'cause I would dearly love to represent them. I, I think this is wrong. Property rights, due process, I mean, this just, it, it just gives me the creeps that you would even contemplate this, and yet, you're going forth, council members, based on the administration's recommendations. So, I'm just asking you to give it long, deep thought, and ask some probing questions about the constitutionality of this, and what happens after the lien is filed? Because I think that's where the constitutional issues would definitely come into play. Now, who's gonna get, who's gonna get subjected to this new rule? Is it gonna be some guy who owns a duplex in the Highlands? Or is it gonna be, well, I don't know if I can show you this, but it's on the website, everyone, underdoglaw.info. This is pictures of the DeWitt property. For a couple years now, he's had a cyclone fence up, blocking off the public sidewalk. But, and why did he put the cyclone fence up? Because he dug his foundation without any permits. Who can do that in Renton but a developer? So, he digs this huge foundation up to the three-foot setback, so the dirt's piled up, and it's killing the trees on the adjoining property. And then he puts a cyclone fence to shut off access to the public sidewalk, and he puts Santa cans on the public sidewalk. Now, people have complained to the city about this, but their complaints are disregarded. DeWitt is a developer. So, the nuisance, this new nuisance law, it should be used against DeWitt immediately. And since I read the city can bring these complaints themselves, they don't have to wait for a citizen. I hope that it exercises the law right away and gets that cyclone fence off that public sidewalk. And here's the most egregious thing, gruesome, newsome. The city made the property owner next door pay to put that sidewalk in when he built his house. So, what do you think that neighbor thinks every time he goes outside and sees that fence blocking off the sidewalk he had to pay for? I mean, how much more ridiculous can it get? So, anyway, maybe you can do something about DeWitt without the new nuisance law, but if you don't, please, use it against him right away. Make him like the test candidate. Thank you very much for listening to me again. I love coming to see you. Go see my Underdog Law Report on the website, underdoglaw.info, and I'll see you all again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, Ms. Peterson's comments inspired me to say a couple of things I've been thinking, which is, one of them, and Ms. Peterson, when you'd spoken to us before, I thought, you know, you raised an interesting topic. We're, we're sort of being torn right now. I feel like we're getting inputs from, from two different directions on affordable housing. And, I mean, I, I'm respectful of, of both sides, but, but Ms. Peterson, I think you've pointed out that maybe we're starting to let the codes get too flexible, which makes it, makes it so there might be favoritism, you know, for certain developments. And, and I, I mean, I see that, I see that risk. Meanwhile, though, we've got other people that are very active in the community that are encouraging us to allow more flexibility to, you know, in the spirit of creating affordable housing. And I guess I just want to say, you know, here on the dais, that I'd be, I'd, I'd be curious to see if you guys can, you know, ever talk and find some common ground on that. And, and you'll hear the people come and speak at the, at the podium, but, you know, we might have to delve into that further, but I, I think they're really, I think we're seeing right here the sort of opposite points of view on that. So, and then, and then also, I appreciate your, your sort of noting that, that with code compliance, as far as I'm concerned, I, I agree with your point, that, that should affect developers just as much as it affects a 30-year homeowner, that frankly, I've been frustrated too with how, how much people seem to think they can get away with when they're in the middle of building a project, which can sometimes last like two years. So, I, I...
They just didn't even have a building.
Okay, yeah, so, so I, I wanted to say, I, I agree. I mean, I think when we pass laws like this, they apply to everybody, so. And so, we gotta be, we gotta be thoughtful about how we do it. Anyways, that's, that's all. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Audrey Adams, and boy, am I glad to be a resident of Renton with police officers like these fellows that were being honored tonight. I feel very safe here, and my own experiences, when I've had to call one, they were awesome. They were fast. Ever since, and I know I told you this before, I gotta say it again, they were so much faster... Ever since, and I know I told you this before, I got to say it again, they were so much faster than police when I was in unincorporated King County. So, Renton police officers rock, they got there right away, so much faster. Anyway, and the second thing, and CJ is not here, but I don't know who is responsible, but I want to thank somebody, and I don't know who to thank, because the gentleman that I spoke to about last time I was here, the fellow that obviously has a developmental disability, who had been holding his little one penny, hungry one penny sign down there at the exit, I haven't seen him since I talked to you last, and that makes me feel very good, and I want to thank you for, you know, Renton is, it's important when we do things like the homeless shelter that you set up, and it makes me feel better about being here and not seeing this one particular gentleman down there. Great. Anyway, and the other reason I have come to talk to you today is because there's a very special speaker coming to Seattle. And Dr. Paul Connet, who's the author of the book "The Case Against Fluoride: How Hazardous Waste Ended Up in Our Drinking Water and the Bad Science and Powerful Politics," I keep it there. This is a phenomenal book, I know you recognize it. It's a phenomenal book. It's packed with science. It, the only flaw that I find in this book is that it doesn't include the Harvard study that showed damage to the developing brain, you know, 26 out of 27 studies in the Harvard School of Public Health Medicine Analysis, because it was, that study was published after this book. So it's incomplete with that, and it's also incomplete because, of course, the study from Ireland that showed also very similar concerning trends in epidemiological data out of Ireland. Anyway, so this highly respected author and founder of Fluoride Action Network, who travels around the world since he's retired, and essentially on his own time, is coming for, to make a presentation at the Town Hall, Town Hall Seattle, and that's at 8th and Seneca on March 17th at 7:00 p.m. Maybe we could put it on your little blog or somebody else's website. I'll pass around this flyers. But Dr. Paul Connet is all about the science, and I know that you are too. I hope you take the time to see it, even though the title of the program is "Why Seattle Should End Fluoridation," obviously, it affects us as well. I live in the water district that gets Seattle water, and I know there's a number of other communities in Renton that actually get water through the Seattle water system, and, but it'll, it'll be an extremely informative presentation by Dr. Connet, sponsored by Washington Action for Safe Water, of which I'm on the board of. And so again, that's Monday, March 17th, Seattle Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Audrey, I just wanted to mention something to you. The last time you came and you spoke about that individual, I mentioned some of the challenges regarding individuals who are homeless with mental illness, and I mentioned you about Valley Cities Counseling that has just recently relocated here to Renton, and they're located right on-
Wells and Second.
Wells and Second, yeah, just right next door almost to Renton Savings Bank. And so I did a tour there shortly after that, and I met with the executive director, Ken Taylor, and we had a very extensive conversation about this, and I mentioned you to him in the context that there are many people in our community that don't understand the challenge. So as Chair for Community Services, I hope to bring Ken Taylor back. He was here doing a committee of the whole meeting sometime last, early fall, I believe, and he gave a presentation, but I think there needs to be more clarity among the people within our community to understand. I also had a personal experience. I went to Safeway one morning to get a cup of coffee from Starbucks, and as I was standing in line, a young man came over to me and he said, "Can I show you something?" And I said, "Sure." And then he began to start rattling off some Bobby McFerrin, you know, tunes and sounds, and he had a remarkable voice box, and he just threw me a bag, and then he went and sat down, and I was intrigued by that. It touched me, moved me. And I got my coffee, went over, sat down with him, and as I began to talk to him, he explained to me that he was homeless, he had relocated here from St. Louis, told me his story, and I was saying, "Good grief, you've got some enormous talent, you, you know, you could, I mean, you could do better instead of here at Starbucks down at Pike Pike Market," you know, or something. And I introduced him with a few other people, tried to throw resources his way, made an appointment to come back and to see him later that day. I came back, and he was about to become in transit, he was about to get on the bus and be lost again. And I said, "Hey, do you really want some help?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "I know a place not far from here, let me take you there." And so I put him in my car, we drove down the street to Valley Cities, I brought him in, they took him in, and that was the beginning of the process. But I just want to tell you that he volunteered to go, and everybody doesn't do that. But the people that work at Valley Cities, they're out there in the community constantly trying to make connections and trying to build relationships and trying to build trust among individuals who will, you know, bring themselves to the place of getting involved, because there are resources there. So maybe if you get a moment, you might want to go there and just kind of find out, you know, what's going on there. And again, like I said, I plan on trying to invite Ken Taylor back so that he can do a presentation in a way where our community members can really understand the problem, the resources, and maybe even family members can try to self-direct some people that they know from their families to those resources. But thank you for your concern and your compassion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Appreciate it very much.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have 11 items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member, like polled?
Mr. Mayor, seeing none, I move the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, the council approved the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Unfinished business, Mr. Person.
I have no unfinished business.
Hey, Ms. Palmer?
I got a whole stack here. Shall we start with transportation? And then I'll do for Councilmember Brier, the Finance Committee, I'm following that.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. State Aerospace Industry Appropriation Grant, Central Sound Aerospace Training Center. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the State Aerospace Industry Appropriation Grant with the Washington State Department of Commerce in the amount of $9,950,000 for the construction of the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center, adjust the airport CIP revenue and expenditure budget by the amount of the grant, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the grant document.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Sorry, Bonnie.
Yeah, it's okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Palmer.
We always like to accept money, especially when it's 9.95 million. And remember, this is on behalf of the regional aerospace, Central Sound Aerospace Training Center that'll be built at our airport. So this is pretty exciting. And with that, I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. SRG partnership contract for the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment 1 to the contract with SRG partnership for an increased fee in the amount of $806,142 for the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the amendment. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. 2014 through 2015 ORCA Business Passport Contract. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to authorize the transfer of an additional $63,902 to the ORCA Business Passport Contract to cover a potential budget shortfall, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement for purchase of ORCA business cards and ORCA business passports in the amount of $92,902 with King County Metro Transit. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. Authorized Budget Increase for Rainier Avenue South, Grady Way to South Second Improvement Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends council approval for the Rainier Avenue South, SR167, South Grady Way to South Second Street Improvement Project to exceed the allocated budget by $750,000 using the previously authorized cash flow equalization funds. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. Authorized Budget Increase for South Lake Washington Roadway Improvements, Garden Avenue North Widening Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends transferring an additional $200,000 from the walkway program and intersection safety and mobility line items to the South Lake Washington Roadway Improvements, Garden Avenue North Widening Project, to cover a potential budget shortfall. This is signed by the committee chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. Construction Management Services Agreement with Pertite Incorporated, South Lake Washington Roadway Improvement Project Supplemental Agreement. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Supplemental Agreement Number 3 with Pertite Incorporated in the amount of $130,514 to provide additional field coverage, increasing the contract total from $253,897 to $384,411. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You were busy.
Yes, and then, on behalf of Ms. Brier, I have two Finance Committee reports, and then I'll be quiet.
Finance Committee report. Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on February 24th, 2014, Claim Vouchers 327 29A through 327 610, Full Wire Transfers and One Payroll Run with Benefit Withholding Payments totaling $5,641,280.63. And payroll vouchers include 723 direct deposits and 56 payroll checks totaling $1,530,654.51. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Last one.
Finance Committee report. Business License Revocation Ordinance. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the ordinance amending Renton Municipal Code 5-5 Business Licenses in response to a growing problem with violence, gang presence, gang activity, and general breaches of the peace in and around restaurants, bars, clubs, and entertainment establishments in the city of Renton. The committee also recommends that council suspend its rules and advance the ordinance to second and final reading immediately after first reading, and declare an emergency in order to have the provisions of this ordinance become effective upon passage. This is signed by the committee vice chair and substitute members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move that council concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Well, that's a new record for me, eight.
Thank you for that. Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Do you feel guilty at all about that?
Well, no, actually, I just feel like I managed that well.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution and one ordinance.
The resolution regards the Dentson Hill Communities Annexation Sales Tax Credit. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the city to impose a sales and use tax as authorized by RCW 82.14.415 as a credit against sales tax, state sales and use tax relating to annexations.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Person.
The ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the ordinance for first reading regards the amendment to RCW RMC for business license, and ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 5-5, 1, 2, 3, and 6 of Chapter 5 Business Licenses of Title V Finance and Business Regulations of City Code by revising RMC 5-5 Business Licenses, including adding and deleting definitions, adding regulations related to revocation of business licenses for chronic nuisance premises, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
Move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
This evening? It's been requested to move it to-
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Okay, I move that we place it on second and final reading tonight.
What did you say?
Second.
Is that what I said? Yeah, sorry.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading this evening. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I beg your pardon.
Ordinance for second and final reading, and ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 5-5, 1, 2, 3, 6 of Chapter 5 Business Licenses of Title V Finance and Business Regulations of City Code by adding and deleting definitions, adding regulations related to the revocation of business licenses for chronic nuisance premises, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call?
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, council, for the quick action on that. As you know, that this amended ordinance is to assist us with dealing with issues that the Electric Control Board doesn't have the authority to do. And we're talking about nuisance properties that are a real public safety concern, so we very much appreciate you acting on this so quickly. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several things to announce. First of all, on this Wednesday, February 26th, the council will hold an all-day retreat at the Merrill Gardens, 104 Burnett Avenue South. The topics will be land use and annexation, physical sustainability, policy guidelines, and process for prioritizing capital projects, and 1% for the art process. Then on February 27th, which is Thursday of this week, from 8:30 to 4:30, the council will again meet at the Merrill Gardens, 104 Burnett Avenue South, and we will be discussing economic development goals and priorities, update on building an inclusive city serving vulnerable members of our community, update on marijuana regulations and enforcement implications, and on aging workforce implications. Then on Monday, March 3rd, at 5:30, the committee of the whole has been canceled, and at 6:30 to 7:00 p.m., there'll be a fire department promotion reception in the conferencing center that the council will attend. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a public-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a Public Safety Committee meeting for March third at five-thirty P.M. till six o'clock P.M. in the council conference room, and there'll be one item on that Public Safety Committee agenda, and that is amending R M C one-three-three attaching leads to chronic nuisance premises. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, I have a Community Services Committee meeting to announce on Monday, March third, from six P.M. to six-thirty, and the topic will be the City Center Plan Advisory Board Appointment Discussion of Ritz-Wischwitz-Wicker. Also, I would like the public to know that the reason that I was not here earlier was that I was attending a reception on behalf of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and building changes that was regarding family homelessness initiatives that are underway in King Pierce and Snohomish County. And so I was there from five-thirty until just about the time that they ended and rushed over here, knowing that I'd get here in time to fulfill my promise of going back into antiquity regarding Black History Month. So hold on to your seats, and if you got a pen, I would recommend that you pull it out, because I might surprise you and talk about some people that have been remiss from our history books. But I always recommend that people do their primary source research and, you know, look the information up for yourself. So I'm going to say the names of these individuals, and then I'm going to spell them for those people who are at home who might want to, particularly students and people who are interested in world history. The first individual that I want to speak about, his name is Imhotep, and that's spelled I-M-H-O-T-E-P. He was known as the God of Medicine, Prince of Peace, and the First Christ. He was around in twenty-nine eighty B.C. And this book that I'm reading from is called World Great, World's Great Men of Color by J.A. Rogers, in case you want to reference the source where I'm getting this material. But it reads, "No individual of the ancient world has left a deeper impression on history than Imhotep. He was the real father of medicine. He is, says Sir William Osler, the first figure of a physician to stand out clearly from the mist of antiquity. Of the details of his life, very little has survived through numerous statues and statuettes of him, though numerous statues and statuettes of him have been found. He lived at the court of Zoser of the Third Dynasty about twenty-nine hundred and eighty B.C., where he established such a reputation as a healer that he was worshipped as a god for the next three thousand years, not only in Egypt but also in Greece and Rome. Early, even early Christianity worshipped him as the prince of peace. His father was an architect named Canifer. His mother was, and his wife appears to have been versatile alike. Aristotle and Leonardo da Vinci. In addition to being the chief physician to the king, he was a sage and scribe, chief lecturer, priest, architect, astronomer, and magician. At that time, magic and medicine were allied as in native Africa and the East today. He was also a poet and a philosopher. He preached cheerfulness and herbs contentment. His proverbs embodying a philosophy of life caught popular fancy and were handed down from generation to generation. One of his best-known sayings is, "Eat, drink, and be merry, for tomorrow we shall die." There's evidence that the Egyptians and perhaps Imhotep also diagnosed and treated more than two hundred diseases, among them fifteen diseases of the abdomen, eleven of the bladder, ten of the rectum, twenty-nine of the eyes, eighteen of the skin. They knew how to detect diseases by the shape, color, or condition of the visible parts of the body, as the skin, hair, nails, tongue, and tongue. They treated spinal tuberculosis, gallstones, appendicitis, gout, rheumatoid arthritis, mastoid diseases, and dental caries. They practiced surgery, knew, and extracted medicine from plants. So that's one of the individuals, Imhotep, and he's been known for many years in certain circles, but we don't see him show up in some of our, in some of our schools. The next one surprised me, because I had always thought that this individual was made up. But has anyone heard of Aesop?
Aesop.
Aesop, inspirer of the world's greatest minds. The influence of Aesop, and that's spelled A-E-S-O-P. The influence of Aesop on Western thought and morals is profound. Plato, Socrates, Aristophanes, Aristotle, Salon, Cicero, Julius Caesar, Caxton, Shakespeare, La Fontaine, and the other great thinkers found inspiration in his words of wisdom. Socrates spent his last days putting his fables into verse. The books that have been written about him and his works were filled an immense library. His writings have been translated in almost every language of the civilized world. According to some writers, he is supposed to have been Lockman, another Negro slave who was the wisest man of the East, and who was used as an authority by Muhammad in the Quran. But the manner of his death, as told by the Greeks, gives soul living a touch to Aesop that it is not difficult to believe he was distinct from Lockman. Of Aesop's early life, nothing definite is known. He lived in the sixth century B.C. according to Plamides and the great Amok of the fourteenth century, to whom we are indebted for Aesop's life and fables in his present form. He was a native of Pharaigia in Asia, minor, and a Negro slave, flat nose with lips thick and pendulous, and a black skin from which he contracted his name Aesop, S-E-S-O-P, being the same with Ethiop, as an Ethiopian. Picture there, if anybody can get a close-up on that, but this is a picture of a rendition of what he was supposed to have looked like. You can see the prognostation of his features there. There we go, right there. Come back, come back, come back. All right, there we go, right there. Okay, all right. Aesop's first master, Exanthus, who saw him, it gets a little funny here. Exanthus, who saw him in a market where he was for sale with two other slaves, a musician, and an orator, Exanthus asked the musician what he could do. He replied, "Anything." The orator to the same question replied, "Everything." Turning next to Aesop, Exanthus asked, "And what can you do?" "Nothing," was the reply from Aesop. "Nothing?" repeated Exanthus, at which Aesop replied, quote, "One of my companions says he can do anything, and the other asserts that he can do everything. That leaves me nothing." Struck by the reply, Exanthus said, "If I buy you, will you promise to be good and honest?" Aesop's reply was, "I'll be, I'll be that whether you buy me or not. Will you promise not to run away?" And then replied, "Did you ever hear of a bird in a cage tell his master that he intended making his escape?" demanded Aesop. Exanthus, pleased by Aesop's wit, was strongly tempted to buy him, but hesitated because of his black and ungainly form. He said that unlucky shape of yours will set people hooting and gaping at us wherever we go. Aesop said, "A philosopher," replied Aesop calmly, "should value a man for his mind and not for his body." The purchase was made, Exanthus made, wife made the same objection and chided her husband for having bought him, but Aesop's cleverness soon won her over, too. A few days later, Exanthus went on a journey accompanied by slaves to carry the luggage. When Aesop chose the heaviest load, the others laughed at him. That, however, contained the food, and grew louder and louder as the days went on until nothing was left. One day, Exanthus Gardner asked, Exanthus, why it was that weeds grew so much better than cultivated plants. Exanthus could find no better reply than to say that Providence had ordered it so. But Aesop said, quote, "Nature is a mother to the weeds, but only a stepmother to the cultivated plants." And so finally, one day after a quarrel, Exanthus' wife left him. Aesop promised his master that he would have her back before many days. Going to the market, he bought meat, fish, cake, flowers, wine, the best of everything. At each shop and to each acquaintance, he said that the reason for the purchases was that his master was going to get married. The news soon reached the ears of the recalcitrant wife, who came running back, saying, quote, "Don't you flatter yourself with the hope of having another wife while I'm alive," she screamed. So that's some of the writings of Imhotep. And then finally, there's one other here that I wanted to mention to you. This individual's name is Akhenaten, and you spell his name A-K-H-E-N-A-T-O-N, and he is known as the first Messiah and most remarkable of the pharaohs. He is known in some respects as the most extraordinary monarch who ever sat on a throne, Lord Supreme of the then civilized world with the mightiest army at his command. He preached the gospel of peace and preached it so consistently that when subject nations rebelled, he refused to attack them. Living centuries before King David, he wrote Psalms as beautiful as those of the Judean monarch. Thirteen hundred years before Christ, he preached and lived the gospel of perfect love, brotherhood, and truth. Two thousand years before Muhammad, he taught the doctrine of one God. Three thousand years before Darwin, he sensed the unity that runs through all living things. Akhenaten, too, was the richest man on earth. The entire empire of Egypt was his personal property, and with it lived lives of his subjects. It is impossible to convey the idea of his wealth. Only those who have visited the museum in Cairo and seen the immense treasure taken out of the tomb of his, of his son, King Tut, will have an idea of it. Three people you might want to do a little research on, and all of these individuals, their history can be seen carved in stone in the place called Egypt, but previously known as Kennet. And that is my Black History lesson for tonight. Thank you for doing this. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Pavoni, any new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Utility Committee on March third is canceled.
Okay. And I guess I'll mention that your Transportation Committee meeting will be canceled on February twenty-seventh, and also the Planning and Development Committee meeting that normally would be from three to four P.M. on February twenty-seventh, the Thursday, that has also been canceled. Okay, moving on to audience comment. Was there anybody who wanted to address the council? It's a wish of the council.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.